This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you turn your cellphones to silent alert if you have not already done so. We appreciate the time you have taken to join us and for your interest in the Waco Independent School District. As part of the board operation procedures, the Waco ISD Board follows 10 guiding commitments that help keep our focus on students and community. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to invite Vice President, Mr. Davis, and Trustee Bledsoe to share one of these commitments.
I'll share number nine, inclusive engagement. The board will encourage diverse perspectives, foster community trust, and ensure all stakeholders feel heard.
And I will share number three, respectful communication. Trustees will listen actively, treat all individuals with dignity, and engage in civil discourse even when differences arise.
I thank you, Vice President Davis and Trustee Bledsoe. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Moving on to a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, when we move on to the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. President Vedanya, Superintendent Spicer, leading our pledge of allegiance this evening, are Cedar Ridge Elementary students Mia Perez and Clara Medina Camacho.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stand, one nation under God, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're moving on to special recognitions.
What an excellent job that was by both Mia and Clara. Mia Perez is a first-grade student at Cedar Ridge Elementary, and she hopes to be a teacher just like Mrs. Alamon one day. Mia loves art, drawing, and playing soccer. Her team is the Mighty Munchkins. Mia's teacher says that she has a bright future because of how she shines in her classroom. Accompanying Mia tonight are her parents, Mrs. Alvarez and Mr. Rafael Medina. Clara? Clara is a third-grade student at Cedar Ridge. Her favorite subject in school is math, and she is also on our soccer team, the Dream Girls. Clara loves to color and watch television, and she wants to be a chef when she grows up. Clara's teacher knows she will achieve what she puts her mind to because she says Clara is a determined student who loves to learn and tries her best every day. Thank you, Mia and Clara. And thank you again to Cedar Ridge Elementary School Principal, Ms. Erin Lengy, for having her students with us tonight. As you can tell tonight, trustees, we've got quite a full house with all of our Advanced Academics Awards, so we're doing things in a little bit of a different order. Next up tonight is our Community Partner Award. The Community Partner Award for October is proudly presented to Baylor Athletics for their tremendous support and partnership with Waco ISD. Baylor brought together the College Football Playoff Foundation, the Big 12 Conference, and school specialties to create a $50,000 dedicated wellness space for students at J. H. Hines Elementary that was revealed in September of this year. Along with the gift of the makeover, a $5,000 grant was given to the campus for school needs, and $1,000 was gifted to a first-year teacher for her classroom. Baylor Athletics also hosted Breakfast with the Bears at Crestview, Brook Avenue, and Cedar Ridge Elementary Schools. At this event, Baylor Student Athletes joined Waco ISD students for breakfast and helped them start their day with encouragement and energy. Knowing literacy is important, Baylor has partnered with South Waco Elementary and Kendrick Elementary to support students' reading skills and comprehension through Bears for Books. This program specifically engages third-grade classrooms to promote learning through fun, interactive reading activities. Serving as celebration for students who participated in the Bears for Books program, students were invited to attend a Baylor Women's Basketball game last year. Conversely, members of the Baylor's Women Basketball Team attend South Waco Elementary's back-to-school event this August when they were opening up the building, making it extra special, and they donated supplies to students and staff to help prepare for the new academic year, and almost done. And most recently, the Los Mariachi Troyanos from University High School were invited to play at a Baylor football game as a part of Baylor's Vamos Ojos Hispanic Heritage Celebration. We are grateful for your support and partnership with Waco ISD. Here to the accept the award are Jovan Overshawn, Deputy Athletics Director and Chief Operating Officer, and Kenny Boyd, Executive Senior Associate Athletics Director of Student-Athlete Services. Thank y'all so much. And from this right writer, I think the right term is sickum? Yeah, yeah. Thank y'all. I know. It's just so much more natural to do this, so. Thank y'all so much. Yes. Next, we're going to honor one of our own, one of our team members here, Lieutenant Jeff Freeman. Today, we get the opportunity to celebrate Lieutenant Jeff Freeman with the Waco ISD Police Department who graduated from the Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas Command College in September of this year. The program taught by a consortium of universities throughout Texas provides law enforcement administrators and executives with the skills necessary to effectively manage police agencies and deliver a high level of service to their communities. Topics include leadership, professional ethics, and integrity, communication, and personnel management, which are taught by top national and international law enforcement experts. Waco ISD is proud to celebrate you, Lieutenant Freeman, and all of your accomplishments. Congratulations and thank you for your service. And I also want to, we're going to take a group picture, but we've got to add a few other cast of characters to this because you wouldn't be who you are if you weren't supported also by Ms. Kristi Freeman. Another one of Waco ISD's own. We're going to get that picture first, and then Chief, I know you're in the building, so wait, let's take one with just them, and then Chief will add you. Yeah. This is not a date, yes. Okay, now Chief, hop in there. Congratulations and thank you for your service. We're getting set up for the big part of tonight. Each year, Waco ISD recognizes students who are named Advanced Placement Scholars by the College Board in recognition of high achievement on college-level AP exams. Students receive this honor with a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. This year, 56 students from both Waco High School and University High School are being recognized. Now, I don't think all 56 are here, but that conference room was full of some of our best and brightest, so we're going to do our best to make sure everybody gets called out. Everyone is welcome in the room, so. They're also welcome, yeah, y'all are welcome to. No, no, no. I was going to say, I think there's still some more space. Like, I don't want anybody, y'all are welcome to come sit up here, too. I don't know which group they're here for. Yeah, let me just get my bag. Our students were successful in part because of their incredible teachers. We also want to recognize high school teachers who supported eight or more students who received a three or higher score on the 2025 AP exams. Please step forward with your certificate as I call your name. We will take one group picture for each high school at the end of this section. So first up, Waco High School Advanced Placement Scholars. Carlos Alvarez Frav. Alana Bond. Ademira Estrada. Crystal Ramirez. Riley Stoles. Dorothy Euchert. Maximiliano Zapata. Moving on to Advanced Placement with Honor, first up, Mr. Joshua Nelson. Emmanuel Perez. And a frequent flyer, usually here for her fine arts activities, Ms. Eleanor Rhodes. Advanced Placement with Distinction, Sandra Lawson. Daniela Mercado. Mr. August Immergen. We're now going to recognize our Waco High School teachers. Ms. Nora Burnham. And we're going to say that counts as a line on our sweater, too. Katherine Hopkins. The one and only, Ms. Shannon Jones. Rosa Piva. Mr. James Yasko. Okay, now, we're going to take our Waco High School group photo. And trustees, we're going to try to divide the group with some coming in the back and some coming in the front, I think. Mrs. Miller. We're going to try to get into windows, and yes, parents, if you have someone in this group, feel free to come take a picture. We will post all the photos on Waco ISD's Flickr account in the next 24, 48 hours. Scoot in even further. Okay? Yep. Perfect. Keep smiling, y'all have a lot of fans. Keep smiling. Okay. Congratulations. We're going to see some of these students again in the next group, so we're going to get reset. Thank you, teachers, for being with us tonight. Okay. University High School Advanced Placement Scholars, Mr. Thomas Vedanya. Thankful he made the trip back in from Austin. Okay, we're going to move on to our University High School teachers. Mr. Spencer Daniel. Coach Jack LaRue. Mr. Reyes Lopez. Tom Lyons. Colton Wheeler. Becky Ziner. Congratulations to these University High School teachers, and this is our group for this, with some really cute friends. Oh, there's another two. She needs to come through. Future AP Scholars with Distinction. Okay, can we get our University High School group back out here for photos? Ms. Ziner, your daughters are more than welcome to join the photo, too. And any parents or proud supporters of these teachers are welcome to come take photos. Look this way, keep smiling. Keep smiling. Congratulations. And don't go far, Dr. Johnson. So much fun. Our next group tonight are College Board Recognitions. Waco ISD recognizes students who've earned College Board National School Awards. These awards include the School Recognition Award, an award that honors students who are in the top 10% of test takers at their high school or who earn a score of three or higher on two or more distinct AP exams by the end of 10th grade. 10th grade, y'all. And the First Generation Recognition Award, recognizing students who are on track to be the first in their family to complete college. This year, we have a total of 127 students who earn this recognition. 24 of whom also earned, along with that School Recognition Award, the First Generation Recognition. We want to congratulate the following students. First up at Waco High School for the College Board National School Recognition. A familiar face, Ms. Alana Bond. Austin Coatney. Another familiar face, Ademira Estrada. Jeremiah Haygood. Another frequent flyer for her theater and her academics, Sandra Lawson. Daniela Mercado. Mr. Joshua Nelson. I should say the very dapper Mr. Nelson. No, 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 fake your time. Pablo Monticello Lopez. Camarona Pass. Camariana, thank you. Good to see you again, Mrs. Eleanor Rhodes. Riley Stoltz. Collect that second certificate. Emery Stornakinis. Yehia Truhilio. Collecting her second certificate, Dorothy Euchert. And another second for Mr. August Immergen. This next group of students received both the College Board National School Recognition and the First Generation Recognition. Marco Antonio Gattan. Jacori Johnson. Camila Morales. Emmanuel Perez. Jorge Solis. Carlos Segura. Saul Truhilio. And that's our Waco High School group. So we're going to pause right now for a group photo. And while we're doing that, while we're getting them back set up, I wanted to acknowledge that this is the group that will also have the traditional banners hung in the campus for them. The banners were not here in time, so thanks to the quick thinking of Mrs. Paula Miller, Ms. Lisa Saxinian, and Furman's, we have a great takeaway for the families, a copy of the banner that got printed so that they can take home what will be hanging in the school. Congratulations, Scholars. And all parents come up, take pictures. And I'm going to repeat, all of the communications team photos will again be posted on Waco ISD's Flickr account. We're still waiting, students still hold. I think you have some proud folks out here. And we still haven't gotten our communications picture. Okay. Everyone, please look at Mrs. Hines right here in the middle. Smile big. Okay. Did we get everybody? Congratulations, thank y'all. Students, I think if we're done, y'all are welcome to exit. And we're going to pause just a second to let us get reset before we recognize our University High School students. Maybe this will give some University High School parents a chance to get a more front row seat. It's a great problem to have, so many advanced scholars. Mr. Hatton, there's front row seat over here. Okay, our University High School National College Board School Recognition awardees. Mr. Aiden Alamon. Denario Alexander. Serena Arias. Nicholas Arisepe. Sandra Cardenas. Karen Chavez. Angel De La Cruz. Sebastian De La Cruz Gomez. Melanie Devora. Luca Diaz Vasquez. Jade Duran. We're gonna pause. We're getting a little bit of a backlog. Kamari Greenleaf. Gabriela Guerra Sanchez. Emily Guerrero. Ms. Alexandria Hatton. Sorry, I got ahead of the certificate, sorry. Nyla Jamshed. Tyrion Jones. Mr. Devontre Kirkland. D Train, I think, right? Eric Lopez. Elijah Martinez. Kevin Martinez. Yahida McGriff. Camila Medina. Josla Moreno. Analia Padron. Ivan Perez. They're fast. Leslie Perez Avila. Chacel Perez Gardia. Gabrielle Ramirez. Jalen Ramon. Joseph Ramos. Savannah Reyes. Jasmine Rodriguez. Yadir Salinas. Cassandra Saucedo. Erin Taylor. Mackenzie Truitt. Amelia Vasquez O'Keen. Rochelle Villa. Ayana Willis. And Anaya Zavala. The next group of students receive both the College Board National School Recognition and the First Generation Recognition. Mr. Brian Corral. Anna Mendoza. And Anaya Taylor. Congratulations to all these University High School Advanced Academic students and their proud principal, Dr. Johnson. We're now gonna try to organize ourselves for another group photo. Parents feel free to move forward. This might be a group that we need to double up. Congratulations. Trustees, y'all can return. We have one more recognition. We don't think she made it, but I'm still gonna recognize her. Yep, cuz we don't think, no, we're gonna still recognize her. Yep. They, they made it look good, they made it look good. While we get reset, I wanna take another moment to thank Paula Miller, the Advanced Academics team, Lisa Saxinian, and the Communications Team for the big lift that it is to try to make that look so organized. And thank you, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Alexander, for being here with us tonight. Our final recognition of the evening, I don't think she made it. I confirmed with Mr. Alexander, we don't see her in the crowd, but I wanna go ahead and recognize her because it's a unique distinction that we've already put out information about, so I want you all to make sure you're aware. Jerry, can we switch to the next? We were gonna recognize our I Am Texas contest finalists, Ms. Nevea Dowd. Nevea Dowd is a Waco High School sophomore. She was, was recognized for placing first as a finalist in the I Am Texas Writing and Art Contest. To her placement level, her piece titled "The Silver Fields" will be placed in the Permanent Collection, the Permanent Collection, at the Bryan Museum in Galveston, Texas. Her written piece is on display at the museum until November 23rd of 2025, so if you find yourself in Galveston, go check it out. Nevea has been featured on Waco ISD's website and social media channels, and I have to tell you, when Jill and Michael came back from interviewing Nevea, they were just abuzz with what an amazing young woman she is. So we really wanted to get to bring her here for this unique recognition, just, just to share her with you. And here's a quick clip of her video in which she shares what inspires her writing.
Deep feelings. I know, like, personal feelings can be like, a little scary to put out into the real world, scary to put out in the public world. But when you find somebody that you trust to, like, share those things with you, somehow you can turn it into, like, an actual story and be like, hey, this is about me, but it's also about somebody else. And I want to share that so people can know that you have somebody to relate to, you can have somebody to know, like, you know, to somebody to, like, look at, somebody to look to, like, you're not alone.
To hear more about Nevea and her work, besides going to meet her at the campus, which I think we all are gonna want to, watch the full video on Waco ISD's YouTube channel and be on the lookout for more great work from Jill and Michael featuring some of our students and their unique accomplishments. I think the next one that's coming, Mr. Abnuisi, was sent our way by you, our Cuber? Yeah. Congratulations, Nevea. We are proud of you and all that you are accomplishing, and we can't wait to all get to shake your hand. And that is all for recognitions tonight. Thank y'all. Thank you, Communications Team.
All right, now we'll be moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, trustees. Strategic Plan Publication. I'm pleased to share that our district's new strategic plan, developed through extensive collaboration with our board, our staff, families, students, and community partners, has officially been published, and you have a copyright in front of you. This plan reflects our shared vision for the future of our schools, outlining clear goals, measurable outcomes, and actionable strategies that will guide our work over the next several years. It emphasizes our commitment to student achievement, staff excellence, and strong community engagement. The plan has been posted on the district website and will continue to be shared through our communication channels, just as it was during my first 60 seconds with Spicer Community Message, to ensure transparency and accessibility. I wanna thank the board for your leadership and your input throughout this entire process. Your guidance has been instrumental in creating a roadmap that truly aligns our district for the important work ahead. Thanksgiving is around the corner. Can't believe it. Beginning November 5th, Waco ISD families will begin enjoying Thanksgiving Family Meals at our schools. I'm excited for this special tradition of our students, staff, and families again. I wanna thank our Nutrition Services Team for their planning and preparation efforts. We will share the meal calendar on our website, social media accounts, and in our newsletters. Two important things to note, as in the past three years, we have both lunch and dinner meal times, and some school meals will be hosted at larger campuses to accommodate more attendees. And then last but not least, in the education world, the end of October, the last Friday of October is a very special day. Tomorrow's the last Friday in October, which is the day of our official snapshot data that is provided to our TEA, which is Texas Education Agency, for the 2025-2026 school year. While we're still refining the data, as of yesterday, our records reflect that we have 12,910 students. That's about 466 students less than last year, representing just under a 3.5 decrease from last year. Compared to the 155 students we were down at this time last school year, it's clearly concerning. And while we're taking this larger-than-expected decrease very seriously, I do want to say that we're not alone in this area or in our state. In diving deeper into our numbers, one of the key takeaways is where our loss in enrollment is occurring, and that's at the pre-K level, the kindergarten level, and our ninth grade level. Additional information about what we are seeing with our enrollment this year. Approximately 89.19% of our students are economically disadvantaged, which is a slight increase from last year. We're also seeing an increase of 2.6% in the number of students in special education and a small uptick in the number of students qualifying for GT, which is our Gift and Talents and Services, up to 11.46% from 10.91% last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Spicer.
Yes, sir.
We will now move on to item number six, information items and reports. Trustee Bledsoe, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Abnuisi, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Davis, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Patton, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Ochoa, do you have any questions?
No.
Next on the agenda is the Public Hearing of the 2025 Annual Physical Integrity Rating System of Texas and Report. I will open the public hearing at 6:42. I will now turn it over to Cheryl Smith.
So, good evening. Dr. Spicer, President Vedanya, distinguished board members. I have the privilege of presenting our 2025 School First Report to you tonight. So what is School First? Okay, School First is our Financial Accountability Rating System that was implemented in 2000 after it was authorized by the legislature in 1999. The goal is to achieve improvement in the management of school district resources statewide. It's to measure and report the extent of those resources used for instruction and evaluate the quality of the management decisions that we make as a district regarding our financial decisions. There are 21 indicators with this School First Report. Four are critical indicators, they're like yes, no, pass, fail type indicators, and then there are 17 solvency indicators. There's also some of the indicators, so there are solvency indicators, that are ceiling indicators. Meaning if you fail those, there is like a maximum score that the district can receive for their entire report. The remaining indicators are just valued on a point spread of 0 to 10 points. So once we get our School First Report, what do we have to do? We have to create an annual financial management report. That report has all the results of these 21 indicators. It compares our results this year versus the results last year. We have to conduct a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. We have to publish the notice of the hearing in the newspaper, which we did back on October 2nd, and we have to invite the public to comment if they so desire. So the four critical indicators basically mainly resolve around our financial report. Did we turn in our financial report to TEA by the state's deadline? Was the report, did the report have an unmodified opinion? Were we in compliance with all of our payment terms for our debt agreements? And did we make timely payments to the government agencies like TRS, Workers Comp, IRS? And the following four slides has the remaining indicators, and I'm not gonna go over those in detail tonight. But besides these 21 indicators, there's some other items that we have to include in our annual report. We have to include the superintendent's current contract. So even though this report is for the 23-24 financial data, it has Dr. Spicer's current contract in it. We have the schedule of lodging, meals, travel, and other reimbursements to board members and superintendent that were made during that time. Any outside compensation made to the superintendent, any gifts made to the superintendent. to the superintendent, any gifts made to the superintendent or board members over $250, and any business transactions between the board and the district. The score that we received is just like a traditional school report card, 90 to 100s and A, 80 to 89s and B, and so on. And so our score this year is, drum roll. A, we got a 9D for this year. So we have Superior Achievement, and this coincides with our Priority Four of our strategic plan, specifically with the goal of district accountability, maintaining strong financial health, raising our first score from 92 last year to 98 by 2030. And by raising it two points from last year, we're on our way to meet that goal. So this is really in thanks to our Chief Financial Officer, Cheryl Davis, the whole finance team. The district leadership, and of course, the Board of Trustees. So how did we get our 94 points? Well, we answered yes, I mean, we passed all four of the critical indicators, and we received the maximum points for all of our solvency indicators with the exception of three. We lost two points for each indicator, 11, 12, and 13, and that's what I'm going to go over with you today. Okay, so solvency indicator number 11 is asking, was the ratio of our long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? So basically, that question is like asking someone if their mortgage exceeds the value of their home. So at August of '24, our ratio was 69.95%, and last year, our ratio was 70.12%. So with the issuance of our 22B and 23 bond issues, it did cause our ratio to put us in a position where we lost two points for that indicator. Now, last year, we lost four points, this year, we lost two points, but to be honest, we're going to be teetering back and forth, because this year, we just barely made it to the eight-point range, where we just lost two points, but as you can tell with the numbers of .6995 and .7012, we're just right there on the edge. The next indicator is indicator number 12, and this is asking, what is the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value? Again, because of the issuance of our bonded debt, we did lose two points, but our ratio this year is .516, I'm sorry, 5.16, and our ratio last year was 5.69. And that caused us to lose the two points. And then the last indicator was indicator 13. It's asking if our school district's administrative cost ratio is equal to or less than the threshold ratio that TEA sets for a district of our size. Now, at 13,000 kids, we are in the largest ADA size bracket. Everybody over $10,000 is all lumped, I mean, 10,000 students, sorry, is all lumped together. So we're in the same bracket that the Houston, and the, you know, Dallas, and Austin, and all the big districts are at, and we're just, you know, barely above that 10,000 ADA, but so our administrative cost ratio this year is 9.66% compared to last year of 9.75%. So we did make an improvement, but we did lose two points for that indicator. And that concludes my presentation tonight, and we just have the invitation for public input if anybody so desires. And we do have, I have copies of the School First Report, if anybody would like a copy tonight, otherwise, it's going to be posted on our website, and it can be requested from our Public Information Office as well. Anybody have any questions for me?
Great. Appreciate you, thank you.
The public hearing is now closed at 6:50. Thank you, Cheryl, Ms. Smith. We will now move on to item eight, the Consent Agenda. Mr. Bledsoe, is there anything you'd like pulled?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there anything you'd like pulled? Mr. Davis, is there anything you'd like pulled?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there anything you'd like pulled?
Uh, I request AT. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm abstaining from AT, I'm not pulling it, my bad.
Mr. Ochoa, is there anything you'd like pulled?
No.
All right. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda excluding Agenda Item AT. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Davis, do I have a second?
Second. I'll give it to Mr. Patton.
All right, thank, all right, Mr. Patton, uh, Mr. Bledsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Item AT, Administrator Compliance with House Bill 3372. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr., do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe. Mr. Bledsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes with Mr. Patton abstaining. We are moving on to item nine, Review and Discuss Priority 1.2, Increased College Career and/or Military Ready Students Presented by Dr. Dina Cornblum.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Spicer, and trustee members. So tonight, I'll be reviewing our Priority One from our strategic plan and Strategic Objective 1.2, which is Increase College Career Military Readiness. So Priority 1.2 is Ensure Academic Success for All Students in CCMR. When we look ahead, we know in our strategic plan that's mapped out for five years, so our goal, it says the district's long-term goal in CCMR is to increase the percentage of graduates meeting CCMR criteria from 62% in 2025 to 86% by August 30, or 2030 rather. And we know that those annual targets have been set, and those are the targets over the five-year period listed in our strategic plan. So when we think about college career military readiness, what we're talking about here is a measure of high school graduates' preparedness for life after graduation. And so when we're looking at that, it's measured by the percentage of annual graduates who demonstrate readiness by meeting one of the criteria below in those boxes. So I'll give you just a moment to look over those, there are several. The only one up there that we do not offer in Waco is the Onramps Dual Enrollment Option. So as we're looking at a baseline, Waco ISD's CCMR percentage for the class of 2024, so thinking about the graduates, is 62%. And so what I want to say about that is, for the 2025 accountability, if we remember that CCMR is lag data, so it's actually based on the graduates in 2024. So right now, when we're thinking about our accountability for end of this year, it will be based off of our graduates in 2025. So accountability for 2026, that goal is to increase the percentage of graduates who meet the criteria for CCMR from 62% once again to 74% by August 2026. So again, that's based on data from our 2025 graduates, and so I'll share a little celebration, because that data is still considered preliminary at this point, and will be preliminary, although those students have already graduated, until our accountability concludes in 2026. When we are thinking about CCMR, how do they, how do we determine this, and where does it count for us? So CCMR counts in Domain 1 and in Domain 2B, and for the state, it's the number of graduates who achieved at least one CCMR indicator, divided by the number of total graduates. In Domain 3, which is our federal accountability rating, it's a little bit different. It's any student who is considered a Grade 12 student. They may not graduate, but they're considered a Grade 12 students divided by all students in Grade 12. As I said already, that CCMR is lag data, so in looking at our accountability for this year, it's based on the class of 2025, and that is any student who graduated from September 1/24 to 8/31/25. And Snapshot is not a part of the criteria here. If you were here with us, you count. So here's the celebration. So thinking about our graduates, we saw what our goal was, was 74%. We already know, based on preliminary data, that for our class of 2025, that they are sitting at a 76.5%. So they've exceeded the goal that was set, and then if we're looking at the Grade 12 students, they're at 74.8%. So either way, we've exceeded that 74% goal. So yay. Yeah. All right. So some overall highlights as related to CCMR indicators. So we have 584 IBCs earned last year. That was up from 142 IBCs before. 540 students earned at least one IBC, and so that's up 129 students from the year before. And we have an increase in AP in dual credit participation with a particular increase in dual credit. And then a part of that is attributed to our cohort advising systems and the work that they're doing at the high school, between the principals, the counselors, our executive directors, and their whole leadership team, and really looking at where kids are, and providing great advising to ensure that they're meeting these indicators. So what are we doing well? So we have aligned CTE programs of study, and that's really important for accountability, because that is a part of our indicators. Our students do have to graduate, starting this year, as being a completer in an area or a pathway. Improved graduation planning and pathway advising, our counselors have really worked hard in this area, done a lot of work around looking at different scenarios with students and thinking about how we would advise those students. And looking at SAT and TSI support, so we know that we have those supports in our WIN classes, also in our English III and English IV, there's extra support there, and we're partnering with Region 12 for some extra coaching and some walkthrough assistance with our Advanced Academics Department to strengthen in those areas. We're also offering some Saturday tutorials, and then that kind of hits on the WIN and tutorial support that's in place there. So areas that we're looking at to strengthen are TSI readiness cycles and structured retesting. So looking at TSIA 2 specifically, so that's the college readiness test, so ensuring that we are really preparing our students for that assessment, that's the assessment that if they take that, they would not have to take a remedial math or English in college, and that does count as a CCMR indicator for us. And so when a student isn't successful, how, how are we then intervening before they take the test again to ensure that they're successful? Support dual credit completion. So one of our goals is dual credit enrollment, but also that dual credit completion. Strengthen AP instructional supports. So again, enrollment in AP is a part of the goal, but we want those students scoring, who are in AP courses, scoring a three or higher on those exams, to be able to count for us for CCMR, but also for them, because then they can usually transfer it to another university. And then expand associate's degree pathways, mapping. So what we're talking about there is our Accelerate Program, which starts at the freshman year, but looking at, if a student doesn't get in on that program the freshman year, are there some other things that we can do with course mapping a little bit higher up to provide space in their course load to where perhaps they could get in at their sophomore year, so that if they really want to pursue that avenue, that just because they didn't get in on it on their freshman year, that, that's not kind of a foregone conclusion for them. So updated strategies and processes for 2025. So again, looking at, we've worked with counselors and with the Student Services Department, we're working tightly with them around planning, advising, graduation plans, and all of those areas, implementing cohort tracking systems. We've been doing that, but we've started tracking down to ninth grade now, that's going to become particularly important, important around CTE, because now our students have to be completers, which means they have to take more courses in a pathway to be able to get that indicator. Conducting CCMR-focused meetings with both campuses and district staff to monitor that progress and make adjustments. I've already talked about those embedded supports for TSI and SAT. Embedded SAT preparation in English III and English IV, that's our work with Region 12. Enrolling students needing a CCMR indicator into College Bridge, that's this year, and so looking at some other possibilities for next year where that's concerned, but that can count, not only for CCMR, but it can also count for the fourth English or a fourth math. Offering targeted remediation intervention based on students' performance. TSI wherever they need it, trying to support that so that they can improve the outcome there. And then strengthen data systems and student advising to ensure consistent monitoring and timely support across all CCMR pathways. So as they're in these cohort meetings and discussing students, as they're seeing a student who was on a pathway, possibly not, really, okay, what can we do to help that student, what's another avenue for them, or help them get back on track? So just intervening early where that's concerned. So we do have strong systems in place, but we are continuing to refine those systems and make those stronger, and then the next phase is really focusing on, once, you know, we continue to refine, is really the consistent execution of that. So as always with any system, it's the execution, and so that's really what we're focusing on. So any questions?
I just wanted to say, Dina, that's really impressive growth, and I think you and your team should be commended, so way to go.
Absolutely, I was going to say the same thing.
Mr. Ochoa?
Just one question, you may have already answered it. Are we, are we talking with those department heads about maybe some students who can test out of these AP classes before they even get into them that might free up scheduled time for...
Spanish is one, where we, where we look at that. So we've bumped Spanish down to like, Spanish III, down to the middle school level, so looking at especially those native speakers, can they test out of it? So that's one area in particular that we've started focusing on this year.
Great, great, yeah, that's fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Cornblum.
Thank you all.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Cornblum. We're moving on to, we're moving on to item number 10, Consider, Discuss, and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Approval of Turnaround Plans and Targeted Improvement Plans Presented by Carmen Logan.
I joked earlier that someone else did a drum roll. I don't know if there's a drum roll for this one, but, so hopefully next year, we'll be able to do that drum roll appropriately. So tonight, we're considering and discussing turnaround plans and targeted improvement plans, but just before we start, I want to remind us that we had three years of data dropped on us within a very short amount of time. So as you already know, we had, we approved the turnaround plan for South Waco back in June, and so tonight, we're going to be looking at five campuses who will, we're looking at a turnaround plan for them, and then in addition to that, five campuses with targeted improvement plans, and we'll discuss each of those throughout the presentation. So the five campuses that we are looking at that require turnaround plans are listed here, we have two middle schools and three elementary schools. And just, this gives in our education code the reasons for, and so I wanted to highlight here GW Carver and Dean Highland, the first two campuses listed, those campuses are at, they have three years of unacceptable ratings, and so they're required to not only develop, but also to implement the turnaround plan once approved. And then the campuses below, Cesar Chavez, Parkdale, and Kendrick, are required to develop the plan this year. And then just on this notice, I just wanted to point out here that notification is required to be given, and that the campuses are required to be, to get feedback, and so as we're going through, but just so you know, all campuses, we put notification on the website about the required plan to notify parents with a date for them to be able to, to come and give feedback, as well as the campuses put that information on Parentsware for families to attend. Just a quick overview for the turnaround plans, which we're talking about first, the definition is plans for campuses rated DRF for multiple years, so campuses that have two or more years. The purpose is to drive rapid improvement through systems, leadership, and instruction, and the requirements are that they have board approval, which is why we're here tonight.
And the requirements are that they have board approval, which is why we're here tonight, and then to have stakeholder engagement, and then finally submission to TEA. And as we talked about when we approved the plan in June, it requires that we have a strategy. And so there's different strategies that TEA is looking for, and the one is most appropriate for our district because we know we have eleven campuses, failing campuses. And we know when there's that many campuses that are looking at this, it is a system concern. And so we first look at what we were doing in curriculum, that we looked internally, not at the campuses when we had that many. And so as you know, this past year, we went through an extensive search for implementation for changing our curriculum in mathematics. So K through twelve, we have adopted Blue Bonnet Math. And then we also for RLA had a change. We had the curriculum in place, but we were supplementing with lots of other resources. And so we've really worked very hard between professional development and then coaching and feedback to implement those different curriculums with fidelity this year. And so I just wanted to put this on here because when you choose a strategy, the state for their success criteria has certain qualifications, and those are listed on here. And that first of all, it requires that we adopt materials that are state-approved. And so all of the materials that we have for reading, language arts, and math are state-board approved. And then the second part is that we have to have, show that we have a hundred and sixty-five days within our instructional calendar, and we have a hundred and sixty-eight days on our instructional calendar. And then lastly, that we have campuses have a minimum of one quality PLC every week focused on instructional delivery and focused on student outcomes. And so each one of our campuses, that is a requirement, that they are having a minimum at least one weekly PLC. Some campuses have built-in time that exceeds that expectation. And another requirement for the plan is that we have capacity building support and that we have, that we partner with organizations that have proven success with that. And so within our district office of school leadership, our principal managers have proven success of turnaround with campuses. So within that, our principal supervisors, along with our district teaching and learning department, that are coordinators that are going out and supporting under the direction of Dr. Cornblum. And then in addition to that, we mentioned previously that we have a Lasso grant, and the partnership that is approved through TEA is through a partner called Instruction Partners. And they are specifically working with Dean Highland and Carver Middle School. And at elementary at Dean Highland, they're focused on RLA, that they've observed classrooms, they've observed PLCs, and they're focused on looking at what are those structures that we have in place and how we can be more efficient and effective with those. And the same thing at Carver Middle School, that they're focused on our math and looking at that and looking, we've done walks at the classrooms there, looking at PLCs, and then they'll be following up at another elementary and middle school to look and see it at other campuses so that we can look and use those information so that we can improve district-wide systems and be efficient, especially as we've moved from the lesson planning process to an internalization process within the district. And then, of course, we don't want to forget our partners at Region Twelve and the partnership that we have with them, both in the area of curriculum as well as leadership. And within that leadership, all of these principals have either gone through the Principal Academy with Region Twelve, are currently going through that academy with Region Twelve, which all of that is supporting the work that they're doing to, as instructional leaders. And then with our curriculum, each of those companies that we've adopted for reading, language arts, and math, that we are partnering with them for professional development and follow-up support. And again, this is just a list of our different curriculums. And then another requirement is student outcomes, but I want you to note on these that the graph that goes across for each campus, the first two boxes are around domain one under accountability, which has to do with the percentage of students that are at meets of both reading, language arts, and math. The last four boxes under each campus is the amount of points that they get under domain three. And so this is a pretty complicated, it's not a percentage, it's number of points under different areas. And so just for example, for Carver Middle School, these, the first number there that shows a thirty-three percent at meets, last year they were at nineteen percent meets. And so an aggressive jump to move from nineteen percent to thirty-three percent. For math, they were at nine percent, so nine percent to a thirty-two percent. Actually, I can't read, that may be seven, but it's seven or nine percent that they are moving to thirty-two percent. And then the same with their other goals. So each of these campuses have worked, and we've alongside with our Director of Accountability, Jessica Steele, and working with the campus to set goals for each of our campuses and then to support the process throughout the year. And then the same thing for our elementary schools. Are there any questions there before I proceed?
You have a question, sorry. Quickly, so the PLC time we were talking about, that minimum is one, is that correct? And you mentioned there are some campuses that have more than one. Is the goal here, because I know that's something we all worry as teachers, we don't have enough time to plan.
Absolutely.
Is there a plan in place or some kind of thoughts in maximizing it, more making it possibly more than one? I know you mentioned some have more than one, is that correct?
Yes. And so I'm not going to say that there is a plan in place, but each campus is looking at the needs of their campus, and that is a goal for each of the principals to look at the needs of their campus. We also, as you know, have built-in planning days. In fact, one of them is tomorrow for our teachers to be able to have that time spent for planning and stuff too, which we are very fortunate for because most of our neighboring districts do not have that built in.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Okay, we'll move right along. And so we also, the targeted improvement plans, and a question that's come up a lot is what is the difference between these targeted improvement plans and turnaround plans? And first of all, the campuses that are part of this plan is because that they have a, they're at a one F right now, or they had three consecutive Ds, as you will probably know, equals an F in the state of Texas requirement. I will say there is one caveat to that. We have Cedar Ridge Elementary listed in here. They were actually C-rated this past year, but they had been included previously in the Lasso grant that was written. And so because of that grant, they were included as part of the targeted improvement plan. But even when I went to Ms. Langy, the principal, and, you know, explained to her that this was going to be a requirement, she knows that even with their federal rating, that there's improvement to do, and all of us have improvement to do, and they're doing the same work and stuff at their campus. So she was completely on board and supportive of the plan. So these are the campuses, Waco High, Cedar Ridge, Crestview, J H Hines, and Mountain View. And then overview of our targeted improvement plan, again, just to share that these are plans identified under the federal accountability, that this is their first year with an F for the three Ds. And again, the plan is to look at the root causes of underperformance. And as we've already discussed, we know this underperformance has been a challenge in the district, and several of you came this week, and so I didn't put on my Mickey Mouse ears, but I'm just going to go ahead and throw it in at this time, that a couple of years ago, went through a leadership training with Disney, and as Disney was talking about, there are certain guarantees that no matter which Disney park that you go to, anywhere in the world, there are certain things that they guarantee. And so it's really been a neat thing, as we've been doing calibrated walks with our leadership team to nail for the first time in years that we really see that equity across the district, that we can go across campuses and see. We've been focusing at elementary school, doing walks across fourth grade. Now we're looking at fifth grade, the same thing for math that they've been focused on, and then even at high school. And so, and then I've had the opportunity to go from elementary to middle school to high school, to these different campuses, and to see that alignment of the curriculum across, it's a really cool thing to see. So I just wanted to add that here. And so these are our goals set for our targeted improvement campuses. And so then we have our performance management. So how are we looking at this data and monitoring that data? So part of that data goes through just ongoing visits through our principal supervisors, but it's also calibration walk so that, again, we're looking at that fidelity and consistency of implementation of this curriculum across the district. But ultimately, we want to see how is that making a difference for our students in the classroom? So it's looking at the data, district assessments, our ongoing TCAs. We will have benchmark release in January and February, and then we have our I-ready data, as you know, at beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year. And then something that has been very specific this year is we've always, as principal supervisors, met with principals and done like review, but I want to commend Dr. Spicer, Dr. King Knowles, and our team, is that this time we have district leadership from the superintendent's office as well as principal supervisors. We've also invited Region Twelve to come in, and so we will be having, tomorrow is our first quarterly review with our campuses that they're going to be presenting and going through each of their data with us. And so looking forward to hearing the progress that we're making and where they're working and the barriers that they still have and how they're overcoming those. One of the requirements is that we have a district coordinator of school improvement. There's a DCSI, that is me, and that, as you know, so I have been the DCSI for previous years, but now that is my focus in the director of school improvement. And then additional resources that we have, the professional development, curriculum training, principal leadership training, instructional specialist meetings that we have all focused on the implementation and follow-up support of our curriculum and instruction. And then our math and RLA cohort meetings, I'm sure you've probably heard about before, but if you don't remember, that monthly, both at the elementary and at the secondary level, we have trainings for model teachers as well as ISs to come in. And so they are getting a deeper dive into the curriculum and coaching support so that they can come back and be model classrooms at their campus, and also to be able to lead PD. I was at Caesar Chavez this morning in Carnegie, was doing some professional development and sitting in on PLCs and doing walks today. And then I was speaking with one of the teachers there that had been a part of the cohort meeting just a week or so ago, and she was sharing that tomorrow during their planning day that she was going to go through some of the differentiation strategies that they had learned at the cohort meeting with her staff. And then, as you know, we purchased the, the Blue Bonnet Math for elementary and secondary. All the campuses, all of our turnaround campuses have held their meetings. There is the attached feedback for those campuses. And then our TIP campuses have started this week because we got later notification on that, but all of that will be done. But we've had a couple of them that have had this, this week after we've already had everything posted. And so GW Carver held theirs on spooky math night and ran through and had parents come through, and they went over and had a, each one of them had a survey there at the end. Caesar Chavez Middle School was having theirs during an open house night, and so they were able to get feedback. Parkdale Elementary held theirs in conjunction with PTA, inviting parents to come and be a part of that and trying to bump up their PTA. Kendrick Elementary had this during their open house, and so parents funneled through there before the open house meeting, and they went through the presentation. And then Dean Highland, as you see, it looks a little bit different, but it wasn't at any fault of, they had publicizers, they were actually the first one held, they jumped on it and had the meeting, but we did have very low turnout. And most of the parents that did come were Spanish-speaking, but everything was in Spanish, and they translated and everything for the parents. And the parents really, I just kind of put on their, the parents were appreciative of the help and the work that they were doing. And they did have one community member that was there who helps and supports that campus on a regular basis with tutoring, and she just, her only feedback was, we just need more community help and support, which we all know and welcome within our schools. And so last but not least, our next steps are, while we're here tonight, is board approval of our TAP and our TIP plans. And then from this, it will follow up with November twenty-first, submission is due to TEA. And then following that, you'll notice this timeline from TEA, is that they will notify districts of the plan of any needs of revision by January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-six. Any revisions then from that are due March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-six, and then they will issue their final notice by April eighth, two thousand and twenty-six. So. That is my presentation. What questions do you have?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Patton?
Mr. Logan, when we did the, the plan for South Waco in June, have we already had approval? Do we have approval from TEA on that plan?
Yes, yes. They initially, they did submit back a revision, and the revision was, because again with our timeline, was about on the stakeholder feedback. And so, but we did go back, and they said they knew that we had had the board meeting, it was open for open comment, and so they included that. But we also had scheduled at that time for Ms. Atnip to have a parent meeting, which she did have after that.
So considering that this is an open meeting, this will also count toward the other plans that we're putting into place?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Region Twelve has also reviewed the milestones and reviewed everything as far as the plan as well to you.
Good. Mr. Ochoa?
First, thank you for your work on this. I know it's a lot, a lot. My question, I guess to put, to use a teacher term, is there's, it just seems like there's no differentiation. You know, what Kendrick needs might be different than what Parkdale needs. So how do we determine? I'm just thinking if Kendrick's overcapacity, what they need is more teachers, then that's going to look different than what Parkdale might need.
And so I will speak to the curriculum side of it. So first of all, the amount of walks and calibrated walks at these campuses are, we have more for our turnaround campuses as well as our targeted improvement campuses, as well as the principal coaching and support at those campuses. And then just our coordinators, so eighty-five percent of our coordinator's support is at these campuses that have been identified for support.
So that leaves me another question, I guess. The walks, are those principal walks, or are we taking? I just remember when I was a teacher and five or six people would come into my classroom, it was very distracting. And I wonder at that point how much good we're doing with, with walkthroughs at that point.
I would say, I mean, the principals and their teams are going in classrooms a lot, and I think initially there was probably more, more in there, but most of the time it's been the principal supervisor, myself, and maybe one or two coordinators if we're in RLA rooms, our reading coordinators with them, if it's for math, and the math coordinators.
And we're providing feedback for those teachers and PLCs or?
So the way it works, before we leave each of the rooms, Dr. Brown, under her leadership, has had that we leave them a positive sticky on their door before they leave. But then the process to you is after we leave the classroom, we debrief and talk about what are the glows that we saw, the successes in the classroom, and then what could we do to, to grow and how could we enhance the lesson? And so then whoever is the supervisor for that teacher is then responsible for giving that feedback to the teachers.
Sorry, I got a couple more. Sorry. So I love that we have aligned curriculum now across the, especially in math. We, we worked really hard last year, I think, to try and take as much as we could off of teachers' plates. Is any of this going to add more to it in terms of data we need to track or anything we're expecting from teachers?
I, not as much from our teachers, but I want to take this time to acknowledge our principals who are here. It is a hard job. It is a hard job. And they are working very hard. They're here. These are all principals who are going to be presenting tomorrow, which is something in addition to what our other principals are doing. And they're doing the work and they're working hard. So I just want to give kudos to them because, yes, teachers are working hard, but these ladies and gentlemen are champions who are championing for their teachers and doing the heavy lift. And along with, I mean, I want to, also, there's so many people I could shout out, but Jessica Steele has also done an amazing job in any time principals have needed support. She's there to help on the budget. So say, use and abuse.
And I'll just add to that. One of the things that we're working on is, we know the work is heavy. And I've talked to principals and we've talked about the fact that like, we've added new math and we've updated English. In a sane person's mind, you never do two sets of curriculum at the same time. There's no ever where that's cool, right? But because of where we are in 2025 in Waco ISD, we had to make that change. With that change, we know that that presents a heavy lift on our principals, on our teachers, especially our elementary teachers, right? So we're aware of that. And I want to commend, just not just like you, Ms. Logan, but our principals, these women and men, they're a beast. They're holding it down. They're setting the standard. They're trying to make sure we get the results we need for students and their staff. So is it hard? Yes. Do we know it's going to be hard? Yes. Are we done yet? Not by a long shot. So we're trying to make sure that we're putting the supports they need. Some of our campuses need more behavior support. So that looks different. Some of our campuses need more academic support. So that looks different. Some of our campuses need more, I'll say, culture support. So that looks different. So they have been sharing with their direct reports and some with me, some with Dr. King Knowles, some with McAdoo Brown, some with Logan, hey, this is what I need, or this is how you can help me, or I just need to vent, right? And so that's what we're trying to do to make sure that we're staying the course, not losing focus on the students and what we're trying to do as we go through this. So October's over tomorrow. There's no students in the school. It'll be November when we come back. We get to reset and hopefully exhale as we kind of push through and get through Thanksgiving and then push through to get through Christmas as we go into 2026. So we know the work. Lots of changes, y'all know this, that we've been trying to adjust and make do with. But we have the right people and the right leaders. And I'd go down fighting with these ladies and men because they care about kids and they're passionate about the work. So, but yeah, we're really trying our best to support all the different players and people leading this work. So thank you.
And I do want to just say one more thing to your question, Ms. Ochoa, was about the work on teachers. And that is one of the things that I appreciate with our instruction partners that we're working with is looking at our systems as an outside entity that goes into districts. They're very familiar with internalization. They're familiar with the curriculums that we're using. And so they are not just coming in and telling us the way to do it. They're looking at the systems that we have in place and how to effectively and more efficiently do the work.
Great. And then I got one more. And I'm done. I'll be quiet. Regarding the 165 days of instruction, we do a lot of testing in the district. Some of those TCA testings, it's my understanding that we have built in like a day to test. And some of those tests, I know, take two days, sometimes three days to test. So how do we account or how do we make up for those days that might be lost for those?
So they're not intended to take that amount of time. And so that's, that's one of the concerns is, and that's one of the things with the lessons within the curriculum, is getting the pacing done for our students. Because if students are having that much struggle with the test, we need them to just take the time because we don't need to spend that many days working on a test. The whole goal of a test, right, is to see where students are and to be able to move forward. If students are taking that much time, that's assigned to us of needs that we have, is what I would answer to that.
You mentioned just something about community involvement and just like, as members of the community, what can we, what can we be doing to like, tell people that here's tangible ways you can go help some of these schools?
Glad you asked. So we have-
Promise that wasn't a setup.
So, and I reference back to when I first got here a year ago. We did entry plans and I met with community members, internal, external, you name it. Anybody who wanted to meet with Spicer, we met throughout the year. And a lot of people said, what can I do? And I was like, I don't know yet, but give us time. So we have circled back to people in our community, people who are retired educators. There's a letter that Ms. Sextonian has. Dr. Rose has been helping us pulling back and pushing back into the community to our retired educators and saying, hey, if you can give us time where there's to come in and read to our littles or provide math support or come and be a substitute, we need you. So there is a letter floating around. If you want to copy, we can share it with you. But we're pushing that out and we're going to just say, hey, this is all hands on deck. We need you. And then you don't have to commit your life with blood, but give us some hours and we can tell you where there's need, which campus, and if you give us one hour a week or two hours a week. So that's the ask that we're asking of our communities, those who have the knowledge and/or who are willing just to say, I've never taught in my life, but I'll come and read to a pre-K baby or a kinder baby, okay?
Sorry. Do we prefer like, do you want that to go through the district or would you just have them approach a principal? Like if there were people like, I want to go read to kids and help?
We're trying to control it. And the reason I say that is they have their hands full already, but they're letting us know. I talked to a principal yesterday or today. I have a lady out of FMLA, we cannot get a sub. I cannot get a sub. So if we know those things, we can say, hey, we're trying to take the burden off of them, but if they come to us, we can farm them out because we have people who are in contact with the principals and they know the needs and we can push the people out. So we're trying to, you know, funnel it, if you will.
And I will say, there's an organization, Stars Book Club. I'll give a shout out to them. I was originally on their board when they started. And so they're a great organization that really comes into our schools, does a great job. I know as a former principal, when our school was in the same spot, that they came in and started work and I was able to really target which group of students I wanted them to work with. And so I can say it made a huge difference for those kids. So Stars Book Clubs. And they do a great job taking things off of our principals and doing the work to help with that as well.
How often do these articulated walks occur on campuses?
Calibrated walk-
Calibrated, thank you. I could not find that dang word.
You're good. You're good. They're happening all the time. It's Dr. Brown or Mr. McAdoo. Y'all want to hear anything from them? Because they're the, so our curriculum team also is doing walks, but they are specifically the walks that we've been talking about where we're focused on just going through a grade level, doing a deep dive on. That's through the work of Dr. Brown and Mr. McAdoo, our principal supervisors.
Is that where you were saying, I'm sorry, Carmen, the fourth, seventh, and then high school? So those are the grades that you're focusing on, on your?
Calibrated.
I'm stuck on articulated. Calibrated, thank you.
You're articulating without calibrating.
No, I'm not.
You are very articulate, though.
President Vidonya, members of the board, Dr. Spicer, Tamika Brown, executive director of elementary. So the, we actually created a calendar that allows us to focus on specific grade levels at specific times, not taking away from all grade levels, all students, but it allows us to go deep and not wide. The question earlier about differentiating the support, what we believe is that the best practices for transformational leadership are the same. They have actually been established by the state of Texas. And what we want to do is ensure that we differentiate the amount of time that we spend on those across the campuses as well as the amount of coaching and support we provide to individuals leading the work. So we have been focusing on, so far in elementary, fourth grade, we spent three weeks, all administrators, all instructional leadership teams, they really dug deep into what was happening in the fourth grade, looking at instruction, looking at coherence, what happens between the, what happens with the student experience in the classroom, in intervention, also what happens in pullout resource to make sure that a student's experience is coherent. We also are coaching and supporting our teachers. They are doing an amazing job. I would love for you to join the principals as they do these walks, but they do them every day. We are currently focused in fifth grade, still going into fourth grade. We're going to add third grade and continue that cycle of continuous improvement. The work is happening. We're really excited about the progress that we're seeing and we're excited about what's going to happen this year.
Greetings. For secondary, we had the principals and assistant principals continue their walks as normal. They had five walkthroughs per week. And what we did, we had a focus on seven, well, eighth grade math and reading. And we looked at that area along with algebra and English one this past three weeks. And what we did, we went into those classrooms, myself and the district content specialists, went in together collectively, every math, every content I just mentioned, we went into every class that week. And in the following week, we split up and went at different times to see how we can get that data as we can, create our, you know, a data tracker. Then we had our final meeting to conclude what action steps and what feedback can we give to principals to correct any action that's needed? What positive things are we seeing to make sure we highlight that and encourage our teachers to keep that going? And then it's also tied into our principal POC where we had everyone come together and we went through those classrooms at two particular schools to really look at, I'll say, Carver's eighth grade English class and Waco High's Algebra One class, give some feedback and grow collectively together. What can we do as a, as educational leaders versus, well, what am I doing differently? Trying to keep that to ourselves, but really made it a professional POC. And then this three weeks, we're combining the instructional specialists, getting them to join us and then moving forward to having the principals join us. So it's weekly, every classroom, and then we actually use that data. We don't just walk in and just leave it at that. No, we need to do something with it. So that's what we're doing.
Thanks, Alonzo. So, Mr. McAdoo, once you do your, or Ms. Logan, who, once you do those calibrated walkthroughs, thank you for telling me to write it down. How many times, so Carmen, you said fourth grade. How many times have you, have you guys been in each fourth grade on a campus? So say, Dean Hyland, how many times have you been in that, in those fourth grade campuses, fourth grade classes on that specific campus, for example? Is it once and done? Or is it like once a week and done? Or is it two days a week? And, you know, how often and how consistent are you showing up to those campuses and in those grade levels?
Thank you for that question. So Dean Hyland specifically, I think we've had three, actually, where teaching and learning and Office of School Leadership are working with the principals to go in and support the teachers. But what I will tell you is the campus is in the classroom every day.
Right.
So the collaboration has been great. And we are excited when we get to support the principals in those walks. But to answer your question, I think it's been three, three visits to Dean Hyland.
Okay. So once, once you guys do these data walks, for lack of better word, do the principals go with you guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So once y'all get the data and then I believe Mr. McAdoo said y'all debrief afterwards, is that immediate turnaround or is that like, I'm going to debrief and get you this information next week or next time we have a principal PLC? How quick of a turnaround are the campus leadership getting information from you guys and from the people that are doing the walks? How quickly and how quick is that turnaround? And is that timely?
It's immediate. So as soon as we walk out of the classroom, we circle and we identify very objectively what engagement is. So we start by counting the number of students. We identify the number of students that were directly engaged in an activity aligned to the objective and we quantify it so that it is not subjective. Following that conversation, we talk about what we saw specifically with instruction and how we're going to coach or support. And a lot of times, it's a celebration because our teachers are working extremely hard. They're aligned. They are working to ensure that they understand the components of the curriculum. So a lot of times, it's a, it's a celebration of what they're doing, followed by how we can make small steps or take small steps or small actions to make it even greater so that we can leverage the work of the team that's present to help that teacher do the best work that they can do.
Do these walks tie in with TCAs?
Yes.
That's the correct, Dr. Corblum, TCAs?
Yes, yes. So the talk curriculum, the talk curriculum assessments are our way of identifying if the work is effective. So that's a moment in time where we are assessing the mastery across a set of standards.
Yes, sir.
And it tells us if the degree of mastery is happening. It is or it's not. And depending on what we see with the TCAs, and that's actually where Dr. Spicer has challenged us to communicate tomorrow, we're looking at the data that we've already gotten from the first two TCAs against the goals that she had us set. And we're identifying if we're making progress. I'm really excited for you to see that, by the way, because we are making progress. And we are able to, in real time, say, yes, ma'am, we're working, we're making progress or we're not. But we are making progress, so we're excited to share that with Dr. Spicer in the morning. But that's how the TCA is connected. So we do the work and then we assess whether our work is effective.
Okay. Another question, when you do your calibrated walks, are you guys looking, going in during intervention times? Or are you going into direct teach moments?
So, so we're, we're, we're doing both. So one of the things that we do in elementary with the sit classrooms is we're looking at the coherence. We don't want students to have, like a student that's already struggling in mathematics. Trustee Davis talked about this a couple of board meetings ago. We don't want a student that already struggles to have 15 different experiences. So part of what we are doing when we go in is we're looking at coherence and trying to make sure that a student who is struggling in mathematics is getting support in the standards that they're learning in their classrooms. So if the teacher has just taught a lesson, the student is pulled out, we want to make sure that as we are supporting that student, that we're supporting them in the way that is aligned to the instruction they're receiving from their classroom teacher and not separate.
And that is clearly explained to principal, campus principals and faculty and staff?
Yeah, our principals are on fire. Like-
Oh, I have no doubt. I'm looking at several dynamite leaders. I, I'm just asking, when we're doing these calibrated walks-
Yes, sir.
-if we are also focusing on interventions, because I'm being made to believe that interventions from the first of the year have kind of changed as we're going through. And I want to make sure if we're doing calibrated walks and things are slightly starting to change, does that not indeed change some of our data that we're pulling to look at effective instruction?
Well, we want to make sure that it's a coherent experience. So-
I figured that would get Courtney up here when I said intervention.
So one of the things that we are doing in elementary is looking at the content that is being used to provide support for elementary students.
Yes, sir.
So there is a curriculum catalyst or catalyze? Catalyst that is directly aligned to how students are learning mathematics. Blue Bonnet, the design of the curriculum is constructing knowledge. It has moved away from just an abstract way of learning mathematics to constructing knowledge, parts of a whole. And so the intervention that our students are now receiving is directly aligned to the pedagogy that they get in their regular classes. So what we're seeing now is more of an alignment. And it's a, it's a work in progress. I do want to state that. It's a work in progress and it is being scaled across all of the schools. But it is the right work to ensure that our, the coherence that I spoke of earlier is happening.
And that's done in collaboration with our campus leadership teams?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Courtney, you wanted to say something when I brought- Okay. Courtney, you wanted to say something when I brought up intervention?
I did want to just say I appreciate y'all's hard work and I'm happy to hear that we have systems that give instant feedback. We really appreciate everything. Mr. Vidana, you got something to say?
Well.
I just want to add to what was said just then because you were asking about, I believe really the impact.
Yes, ma'am.
Of us going to those campuses over multiple weeks. The great thing is, because as Dr. Brown shared, that we debrief with those administrators. They turn around and give the feedback to teachers. And then it's a beautiful thing because the next time we go back to that teacher's classroom, we've been able to see that improvement across the classrooms, across the district.
That's what I was wanting to hear.
Yes. So we're seeing the power of the work that's happening on the campuses in real time.
Okay.
Jose, can I say one more thing?
We, we, I think we all done with her. I just wanted to say, I know multiple people have thanked our principals tonight. But just, I know like all this stuff is really heavy and it's kind of sobering and it's a bunch of numbers and jargon that I don't even understand half of, if I'm being honest. Kids are more than numbers and I think y'all know that. And we are so, so grateful for you guys. I know that you guys are just doing unbelievable work and working really, really hard on behalf of our kiddos. And I just want y'all to know that we are so, so, so grateful for y'all. And y'all do really important work. No matter what any of these numbers say, no matter letter grades or any of that, you guys are doing a really, really outstanding job.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, I just want to ask this out loud so I don't forget. We can talk about it later. But I'm just curious because it's Texas and I wish it wasn't this way, but we teach to the test. And I'm curious how aligned the Blue Bonnet curriculum is to the STAR test. But we don't want to talk about that now because that's, it's a whole nother thing.
I'll just stand real quick.
Okay, good.
To that, as in the P L Cs, part of the process, what they are doing is they're looking at star line questions to the standard, linking that with the assessments within the curriculum and then linking that back to the lessons that they're in. So for example, I was at South Waco today sitting in P L Cs, Ms. Atnem. Shout out to her, was leading the P L Cs for fourth and fifth grade math. And so they were looking at those standards. They were backtracking, what does that look like in the module? What does that look like? So that when there's so many problems within the curriculum, you can't get to all the problems. So they're making sure that the work that they are doing is linking back to that rigor and stuff of the standards.
And then lastly, just getting back to something Taylor mentioned, I would like to challenge the board, if we're not doing it already, to get in contact with one of the principals and maybe give up an hour lunch break or two a week and see how we can help. Whether it's reading to kids or, you know, monitoring lunches or whatever it is, but I think we, we can do that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank y'all. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Blitzer, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnesi, is there any discussion?
No, thank you for everything that you do.
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Sky passes. And we're moving on to item 11, review and discuss teacher retirement system. Active care presentation presented by Gallagher.
Good evening, Dr. Spicer, President Vidanya. My name is Brad Spring. I'm the lead consultant with Gallagher. We are your health and welfare consultant. We work with finance administration on monitoring your health plan that you offer to another one of your most valuable assets, your faculty, your staff here on campuses. So for this evening, I would like to briefly go through your, your fiscal year end reporting for your medical plan. You also run on a calendar year, so we will show you a calendar year slice and we'll also show you the fiscal year slice as well. We also take into consideration, and we do this for all of our districts that we consult on, a review of T R S as a potential option for your health plan pending your renewals. And so we have some of that in here as well. I'd like to just walk through you, walk through with you. It is just an analysis for this year and I can kind of get into how the data works with that. This will be something, just so you know, as a fiduciary responsibility, we will be doing this every year. And we will be working very closely with H R, with finance to make sure that the right decisions are made for your plan. So we have data tonight through August of 2025. Just so you all know, I appreciate we're at the end of October. Data in the healthcare world comes in a month behind. And so our September data is just dropping now, but because this was the end of your fiscal year, we wanted to make sure we got in front of the board to have this discussion. This, these few bullet points are related to your August data running on a calendar year. So very quickly, everyone, we work in per employee per month. So we divide out things by per employee per month. And currently your gross medical plan expense for the month of August was at $1.7 million, roughly $948 in, on a per employee per month basis, which includes your medical, your pharmacy and your fixed cost claims. And we'll walk through that a little bit more in detail in just a moment. We also walk through and look at your year to date, your gross medical expense for all the months is right at 10.7 million. So this is a very large expense on your budget. So we definitely keep track of this. We work on a monthly basis with H R and administration. We have meetings. We go through the data. We keep a pulse on your plan. The actual year to date results, now again, this is through August and this is on a calendar year. I'm going to show you fiscal in just a moment. We're running about 8.2% above budget, 8.2%. We do have some months left to go, so as you can appreciate, every month that comes in, those, that number changes somewhat, right? And ideally, we appreciate from a public budget perspective, we really want to get to zero. We want to get to, you're not a deficit, you're not a surplus, everything's been made. And I can talk to you more in depth as we go through on some of the things that we've been doing with the plan. As of right now, current budget shows a projected deficit of about 811,000. And again, guys, I would just remind the board, every month that comes in, there's more premiums, there's claims experience, there are stop loss reimbursements, there are pharmacy rebates that go in to help offset those costs. And we calculate and show all that. This page here for the board shows from 2022 through to present, 25 of August. And what you can see here just very quickly is we take your gross claims, we look at your rebates. What are rebates? Rebates are what you get back on brand and specialty drug, okay? They are a big factor for your plan. We have some pretty high utilization on prescription drugs for your plan. And so rebates are a big factor from a funding perspective. We also then look at your specific recoveries. What does that mean? That means those are claimants that have exceeded your stop loss deductible. Because you are a self-funded plan, we have stop loss insurance. And in fact, we are working through a procurement process right now to secure the renewal on your stop loss. And we're working with Sherri Smith and team. And those, anything over those certain amounts, you would receive back. So the district is, is covered and your dollars are covered. So it's the protection of the reserve to continue to pay the claims. As we go down, I won't go through every line, but as we can go down, you can see that we break it out. You can see the enrollment might be interesting. You can see enrollment from 2022 has dropped slightly. These are, the enrollment is going to encompass what we refer to as subscribers and then of course, members. Your subscribers are your teachers and staff members on campus. The total members is inclusive of spouses and dependent children. As we've said, your plan year runs on a calendar. So on a calendar year basis, this is data through August. I will briefly just walk through this with you. At the very top, we talked about your subscribers. You had in August, 1,819 folks on your plan that are your teachers, your staff members, the folks doing the work day to day on the campuses. With the members, if we include those, we had 2,607. So there are 2,607 belly buttons on your plan. As we go down, you can see that we break out your medical claims by month. And again, everyone, we meet on a monthly cadence, if not on a weekly basis in some cases, with plan administration to make sure that we are monitoring the plan, seeing what's going on, trying to mitigate to the extent that we can, cost where possible. As we go down, you can see your, your pharmacy claims as well. And then further, moving further down, you can see your R X rebates, which you can see are pretty, are fairly substantial and do help to offset the plan. However, that does mean there is utilization on the plan. As we go down, we also talk about your fixed costs. We have your administrative fees. That's what you, that's what is part of what is paid to the T P A to run the plan, to administer the E O Bs, to take the calls, to adjudicate the claims. And then we also have your stop loss premiums. And I just mentioned to you all that we are going out to bid for stop loss now. We do that on an annual basis. We will always do that. As we continue down briefly, you can see we have your employee contributions. These are strictly the dollars that are going in from your members on the premium, on a premium basis. And we break it out by month and you can see over on the far right side, we have year to date. And we also illustrate in a rolling 12. We like to show several different slices, especially to our academically inclined clients, and we have many. If we also look at the employer contributions, you can continue to see that Waco has a very generous contribution toward the plan, which is not uncommon within public, but I would just commend this team, the finance administration team for continuing to find ways to be as generous as possible to maintain a robust benefit. Because why are we doing that? We're trying to recruit and we're trying to retain valuable faculty and staff that you all need. And then finally, you can go down and you can see that we have a budgeted cost and an actual cost. And unfortunately for this plan year, and again, we have some months left, so I don't want to be too down in the negative on it. We have run a little bit over, okay, for each month. And you can see what that is. And we run it, run to budget a deficit number. Again, more months to come, more rebates to come. In fact, I believe you just, we just booked another big rebate that came in, so the data continues to change and move. But wanted to share this on a plan year or calendar year basis with you. In the next slice, really quick, you can see that we have your fiscal year, same setup that we just talked about, everyone. And what's interesting here is, so when I used to work in public finance, this to me would be a pretty good year. We were, we ran at the very end, if you look all the way over to the right, under the year to date column, you can see we ran, we did run 402,000 over budget, so that was a deficit. However, when we look at it and compare it on a percentage basis, that's 2.8%. We ran 2.8% over budget. As you can all appreciate from medical perspective, things happen, claims happen. 2.8%, we're right in the sweet spot, if you will, on the fiscal year, okay? We appreciate, we would like to see some surpluses. We would like to see a flat that rarely happens from a medical perspective. But it is something that we continue to monitor. Briefly on this, you can see the, I call it our pizza pie down at the bottom, the combined plan expenses. Just taking the highlights, 50% is being driven by medical and 37% by pharmacy. Just anecdotally, in the market, we are continuing to see pharmacy claims increase year over year and medical, in some cases even eclipse. We have not seen that yet for this plan, but pharmacy obviously is a driver of cost for this plan. Because we have not been in front of the board necessarily with this data before, we wanted to show you what we are showing, what drives the cost, okay? And this is all de-identified information. So just very quickly on here, you can see that we have our claimants. We list them out. These claimants are at $75,000. That's a combination of medical and or pharmacy. When we look at this, you can see that through the year, that as we go across what plan that they are in, you offer three medical plans. You can see the relationship, how they, who, who they are in relation to the plan, the diagnosis that they have. Just very quickly on the top view, we have a sepsis claim. Again, that's something that's happened in the hospital. Certainly didn't want to happen. It's something that's happened. And you go across and you can see where we break out the medical and the pharmacy. So you can see where those costs are coming from. And finally, over on the far end right side, you can see the expected reimbursement. So that would be what stop loss is reimbursing the plan. As we go down, we've had a, we've had a, we've had a stroke and we've also had a newborn child with some conditions. So anyway, it won't go into too much detail further, but you can see this is the type of data that we are looking at. We are looking at it with finance and administration. We are monitoring this monthly, even more so than that, but on a monthly call with the team. As we go to the next slide, you can see these are the diagnosis categories. And really quickly, I would just tell you, the number one is factors influencing health. That just means office visits. And you know what? I don't get worried about that. Because that means that people are going in, they're meeting with their physicians and they're getting the care that they need. We would prefer that they would catch something early as opposed to find it later and maybe have some more cost and burden upon the member with relation to that. Diseases of the circulatory system typically related to heart conditions. One large cost driver for your plan is neoplasms, which are cancer treatments. And that's been something that's been going on for this plan for quite a while. We've had a number of cancer claimants and as you can appreciate, that does drive a lot of cost. Again, I would tell, I tell all my clients, anyone that would be on this list does not want to be on this list. But it is something that we definitely would track. As we get into the pharmacy, as I've talked about pharmacy is a driver of cost for your plan. You can see that the majority of the drugs that are, are driving costs, at least from a top drugs plan paid, are going to be your anti-diabetic medications. They're going to be your cancer medications. And then also some dermatologicals, which continue to, we continue to see rising in utilization. Below that, we also show the top drugs by count. And one thing that I don't get too concerned about here is the majority of these drugs are going to be cholesterol and blood pressure medication. So maintenance meds relatively inexpensive. And it just shows that members are taking the medication that they need to take to maintain their health. As I've talked about, from a fiduciary perspective, every year, we are going to start looking at T R S as a potential option. Right now, you are a self-funded plan. You manage it, you pay your claims. T R S is another option. So we will look at T R S on an annual basis. As most of you are probably aware, T R S puts out their new rates for the, for the coming plan year in July. So we have to reconcile with that, right? And for you all, and we'll talk about this in just a moment, for you all, you would have to make a decision in theory by the end of this year for nine one of next year. But we don't know the rates for nine one of next year because those will not come out until July. So we will do the analysis again. So we're always going in a little bit blind, but we take the data that we have. We'll use the data we have and what we can get from the market. Really quickly, just looking at trend, the C A G R is the compound average growth rate, just so you know. So really, your plan historically has been running at about a 4.6% trend. That's pretty good. National trend for medical is about seven and a half percent. Pharmacy is anywhere from 11% on up, just depending on the utilization of the plan. Pharmacy definitely is becoming a much bigger cost driver. In looking at that trend and then also taking a consideration of what T R S has, and we've done a huge analysis on our side because we have many district clients. You can see that the trend that you're experiencing now compared to what we're experiencing, what we see with T R S is much lower. So I know it was on the agenda, but I would just reiterate to this team, to this board, that it is not a recommendation to move to T R S for this year. I would say it's always an option and we will continue to look at it on an annual basis. But this is one slice of that. One other thing I would also mention here is, is that T R S, you are locked in for five years. Hotel California, some say you check in and you cannot check out of the health plan for five years. So it is a huge commitment for a district to get into, especially from the standpoint that right now, your administration is able to, you know, in a way, craft and build a, the funding rates and of course, which translates to premiums. There is control. To move to T R S, we, we give it up. And what we find typically with most of our clients, and we have helped clients transition to T R S where it is, makes sense financially. The clients that we have that move to T R S typically have no other option. They just, they don't have anything else. This is the last ditch effort. And so with that, in lining with this graph, I would just say, the risk that is continuing to go into that pool probably isn't the risk that Waco wants to have, at least today. Today, we still have options. Part of a move to T R S, and this is something that we look at and we discuss with the team, is what does this mean financially for the district? It's not just pick up and leave. There are many fees and things that we would have to work through. And one of those, and I've mentioned rebates before, one of those is there would be a potential loss of rebates. Well, we know there would be because it would be a short contract. The reason it's a short contract is y'all are on a calendar year. Nothing wrong with that. It works great. T R S is on a nine one contract. So the district potentially, our calculation is y'all could lose potentially $1.3 million. That's not losing, but leaving on the table, leaving on the table. And there's nothing really that can be done about it from a contractual perspective because the contracts are signed on, on a calendar year. We also have to take into consideration run out. On a move, there would be run out claims that would come in, right? So those claims continue to come in. Our estimation from an actuarial perspective is you would probably be looking at 1, 1.1, 1.2 million dollars in additional claims that come in. Typically, those come in within the first three months of the new plan year. But it would be obviously a liability on the district. And not to get too wonky on you, but I will tell you that if you, because of the short year, we would always recommend terminal liability on stop loss, which means that you would still essentially have stop loss coverage for a few more months to help the district should there be a catastrophic claim come in. Because of the short year, it's really not possible to have terminal liability. So it's really not an option on the table. Now, I would tell you, I will get creative with stop loss carrier. But at the same time, it is still a risk that I just don't see the district needs. We don't see the district. We don't see the district needs to make at this time. We'd look out, data drives our decisions, as I know you all know from an education perspective. We look out and we do about a five-year out. Where do we think things are going, trend, actuarial analysis, et cetera? And what you can see is, when we look at a rate-to-rate comparison, TRS, at least in fiscal year 26, is a tad bit lower than what, than what Waco is currently at. We can see in 27, TRS, uh, to, TRS is a little bit lower. But what happens is, as we get into fiscal year 28 and 29, we foresee that to start changing. And again, that kind of speaks to the conversation I just had, or what I just mentioned with about the risk that's going into those pools. We anticipate more and more risks we don't necessarily want to go into those pools, which will then translate to rates that will be dictated down to member, well, to districts. And then of course, how it's the district funded, and then how do the, what goes to the member. We also do benchmarking. Again, as educators, I know you know the importance of benchmarking. You currently have a United Healthcare as a carrier. From what I hear, I don't hear, because silence is golden. I feel like everybody, for the most part, is very pleased with the plans that they have. Open enrollment has just, has just ended, and it's always a pleasure to work with HR, just so y'all know. TRS right now has Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas. They are going out to bid, so we don't really know who the carrier will be. My bet would probably be they would probably remain with Blue, but we don't know, we, we shall see. They currently offer three plans as well, they currently offer three as well. We do break down the plan design they have, and then what you can see at the bottom is, we take just averages. It's a little hard to do some of this analysis. We take some averages of the premiums and we try to just illustrate. Now, this is across all plans. Now, we can break it out by plan by plan, and they'll be up and they'll be down. But on a premium basis, according to what y'all fund today and what the member pays, according to what you would fund at a minimum level with TRS, you can see that for the most part, the, the premiums are lower as of today with what you have. On a premium basis, member level premium basis. We also look at plan design. You can see just very quickly, we have the Waco plan designs here. You have three plans, very competitive, very common for our districts to have three plans, including usually an ACO or a accountable care organization, a point-of-service model. And then you also have a H, the HMO is what I'm referring to. And then you have the high deductible plan and then a PPO plan, very common. Similar situation with TRS and their offerings. The main thing I would tell you here is, yes, you can see that their deductibles are a little bit lower. So we of course, take that into consideration. You can also see that in some cases, for example, the current out-of-pocket maximums on an individual basis are higher on the TRS plan. They're higher on the TRS plan today, families are a little bit lower. The other thing I would just tell you briefly is that as we go down, you have co-pays on your high deductible plan, once members meet their deductible, right? You can't have co-pays before you meet your deductible, so they meet them. Within the high deductible plan of TRS, which we know we have quite a bit of utilization within that plan, which is a good plan that you have, they go on a co-insurance basis. So it, it provides a little bit of instability, especially for a member who may not have the dollars to pay for a drug. They don't know how to calculate and figure out, I'm used to this plan, I'm used to this, this co-pay, things can change. So that's not, I'm not picking on TRS for that, but I'm just pointing it out as one of the main differences that I can see. One thing I will mention for this, there is no longer a Baylor HMO plan offered, but Baylor is an in-network provider, just so you know, that there is not an HMO plan with Baylor specifically anymore that is offered. I tell y'all, we do this on many different slices and we show it in many different ways. This is just the bar graph to illustrate the previous slide that was referencing the averages on your premiums compared to TRS. There's a lot of numbers here, but I just want to show you for full transparency. This is some of the exhibits that we work through and talk with, with Finance, with HR and Plan Administration. You can see that really on a rate-to-rate level, if you focus just on those green boxes, that TRS is anticipated to be about a $1.3 million savings. Now, that is a rate-to-rate, that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about benefit design, we're just talking rate-to-rate. So that sounds pretty good, right? That looks pretty good? Well, as we continue to move into the analysis, as I mentioned earlier, there are factors and costs to move. And so quickly, we look at a short contract year with stop loss. That makes things difficult for terminal liability, which is an exposure on the district, which is not what we want. We take into consideration medical runout claims, around 1.1 million dollars, 1.1 to 1.2 million. We're leaving roughly, and this is all calculation, because we, it's based on utilization, we're leaving approximately 1.1 million dollars in rebates, which are your, which are your dollars. We would be leaving those on the table, that, we don't, we don't like that. So when we take a consideration, that's year one, we take a consideration of 1.3 million roughly in a, in a rate comparison, you know, looks pretty good for TRS. But when we also take into consideration the cost of runout claims, we take into consideration the loss of rebates, potentially two quarters of rebates, which y'all's rebates are pretty high, around $750,000 on a quarterly basis, paid back to the district. We would anticipate, all things considered, roughly a $955,000 loss. So that 1.3 changes when we start taking into consideration all of these moves. There are other factors as well, as you can appreciate, any credits that the district may have received from carriers may have to be paid back. There are all kinds of things that just have to be taken into consideration for this move. But again, to the board, I would tell you, this is something we are going to continue to do on an annual basis. We will show it to you in any way you would like, we will benchmark, we will use our data, and we will be back in front of you. I have quickly here just some basic requirements, and the main things that I would tell you all is, is that TRS requires to move into TRS, you have to make the decision by the end of the year, 12/31. Of course, I know everybody's going to be celebrating New Year's, so no one wants to have that call at that time, but that would be the deadline to do that. And it is a lock-in for five years, five-year lock-in. In addition, in addition to that, and I mentioned it before, terminal liability, the inability to secure that from a stop loss perspective is, is concerning to me, based on runout, potential runout claims. And then of course, the loss of rebate, the, the loss of rebates and the, they also use a different system. I, I talked to HR about this, they use a different enrollment system, which can be a little frustrating at times. We have a potential timeline, again, I've told, I've told you all, and I've talked to HR Administration about this. We've helped districts move where, where we find that it's financially the best solution for them. And this is just a sample, potential timeline of what that would look like. The main focus of that is a 12/31 opt-in. We have to wait for new rates until July, that would go into effect on nine-one of next year. In addition to that, from a member perspective, because I appreciate you meet the member where they are, right? And we like to do that as well. Members that would have accumulated on their deductibles and out-of-pockets, should there have been, should there be a move at some point, they would lose that credit and start over. And that, and for some, that may not be that big of a deal, but for those that are utilizers, that will be very, that could be very difficult. I have an appendix here, everyone that has Region 12 specific data from a rate perspective, we have percentages, we have all kinds of things, I don't think I need to go over it today, but I wanted to make sure that the board had that information. We showed it, as I said, we showed it in a number of ways. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Ochoa?
Just two quick ones, just out of curiosity, how do you, what, what's responsible for the DIP and the TRS plan in 2027?
Responsible for the DIP?
Yeah, you had, you had 2027 in your projections.
Rate-to-rate, it's just a rate-to-rate analysis. So right now, because they have a bigger pool, so we have to rate based on your, on your membership, right? Their membership much larger. So for the first initial years on a rate-to-rate comparison, what I mean by that is premiums. Their premiums can be a little bit lower than what y'all are, that what y'all are at today. So that starts out that way. But as you, as you can appreciate, we anticipate those rates to continue to increase based on the risk that we are seeing entering the pool.
Secondly, I, I do not need the calls or the emails, so I am in no way suggesting that we get rid of, of these. But Wegovy, Ozempic, the other one, those seem to be our, our top prescriptions, and it seems like everyone's doing a GLP-1 now. What, do we have any flexibility in switching to something that probably costs 200 a month versus something that costs 1,300?
Ideally, yes, there would be something, but there's not currently, from a pharmacy, PBM perspective, pharmacy benefit manager. Outside of the plan, there are, there are compounds and things I'm sure we all hear about that have lower costs. I continue to see in social media there daily, you know, there's $150 a month, there's a 200 a month, that would be off the plan. Your plan currently does cover weight loss drugs. That's something else that we're monitoring, and I will tell you this, to this team, it is something that we are monitoring very closely. We have put into place as of January of this year, so we're over 10 months in now, an anti, what was referred to as an anti-obesity management program that is administered through the current PBM, the pharmacy benefit manager. And all that means is, is that for the district to cover that drug at any level, now keep in mind, the members have co-pays, you know, they are paying. To cover it at any level from a district perspective, the member has to be engaged in this program. Within the program, there is data that talks about BMI, that talks about A1C, and we are going to get all that data, and I'm working closely with Finance, working closely with HR on this, and the PBM obviously, that data will all be done and reconciled in July of this coming year. And I appreciate, you know, I know it's like, why does it take so long? Does the claim run in, the run out, the reconciliation of it all, it takes a little bit of time. But by July of this coming year, Plan Administration will meet, we will look at that data. From there, they will make a determination on what we, how we move forward with that drug or with those drugs being covered or not. And so data drives our decisions. This is the last ditch effort, if you will, let's see what happens to maintain the benefit, get the member where they need to be, and see where the data comes out at the end. So we are working through that now. Come July, I'd be happy to come up in front of y'all, maybe August, come up in front of you all and, and share that information with this team, pending HR approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to item 12, Presentation and Discussion of 2025 Delinquent Tax Collections, presented by Connor Buchanan.
Good evening, Dr. Spicer, President Vodanha, Board members, thanks for having us this evening. I'm also here joined by one of the founding members of Rofe Boswick Murphy, excuse me, I'm sorry. Beard Colton, Rofe Boswick and Dixon, Mr. Rick Boswick, who he won't hype himself up, but used to be on this board and actually was the president of the board at one point in time as well. We've got your property tax report, both on current collections, delinquent collections, and then some of the state audit things that we do for the district to try and get some of the property tax money that's lost during the year back to the district. So there should be in your packet a graph that matches this one that outlines total annual tax collections. So the easiest way to kind of look at this graph is to see it as a cash basis accounting of all of the property tax dollars that come into the district during the fiscal year. So not just current property taxes, but also delinquent property taxes and then any penalties and interest that accrues on those. As these numbers are one of the numbers you set your budget on every year, it's important to get those collected. You'll notice that over the last two years, those numbers have dipped below 100%. And I will say that is because we have, in just our current, excuse me, our delinquent tax collections this last fiscal year, we get delinquent taxes turned over to us in July to collect. In the last fiscal year, we collected an additional about a million dollars, it's actually over a million dollars that is not reflected on that graph because of changes due to the tax rule by the appraisal district. So essentially, that money made it over to the tax office. The appraisal district makes those changes on the tax roll, and then they have to go back and refund that money for previous property tax years. If you put that million back in, you would actually be sitting at about 100 and a half percent. And if I had a, kind of a caution to the board, is that these protests, the amount of protests that the appraisal district has seen over the last four years has gone up from about 14,000 to about 24,000 every year, so it has increased significantly. I'd like to say that this will change and that we won't have these massive numbers of refunds, but it may be a reality at this point, as we've seen that for the last two fiscal years for the district. But again, the delinquent collections, and Mr. Boswick will talk about those in just a moment, are good, I would say great. But we're having to pay a lot of that money right back out due to those changes in the tax roll after we get it collected.
As Connor said, I sat in y'all's seats, if you can believe it, almost three decades ago, actually.
Seat's still warm. My seat is still warm.
And one of the things come budget time that is critical, particularly in light of the vicissitudes of government funding, both at the state and federal level, is having delinquent or tax collection, property tax collection, that is consistent year to year. And Connor's firm and mine try to balance two major factors. One is, we want to maximize your tax collection. But we also want to balance that at the same time with the understanding that we're collecting from your constituents, your neighbors, parents and grandparents of your students. And we try to do it in a way that is respectful of them always, because when I was sitting there as you are, I expected that. And we think it's critical, when you interact or when you have reason to interact with your constituents, that you can feel comfortable that our efforts are balanced and try to respect the people that we're dealing with. And, and the obvious reason is, most people, vast majority of the people, if they're delinquent, it's not because they want to be, it's because there's a health issue or a job issue. And because of that, before any lawsuits are filed, and sometimes a lawsuit has to be filed, we work with them to enable them to pay out those delinquent taxes over time. And we assume, and that that's the way you would want it done. And, and that's really our goal, is to make y'all comfortable that what we're doing is the way you would do it. As Connor said, the delinquent tax collection, you hand over to us on July 1, the delinquent taxes. And over time, you collect, even without penalties or attorney's fees, almost 100% over a period of time. You have to, as I said, work with people, and that takes time. And in this bar graph, you'll see, in say, the 2021 tax year, you've collected 99.72% without penalty or interest being applied. And so that is a very, very high collection and something that come budget time, you can count on from year to year. Obviously, it takes some time, because we try to work with them amicably first and then sending out tax notice, this is, and I'm going to hand it back to Connor to explain in a little bit more detail, the process that we go through that enables you to sustain a collection rate over 99%.
Rick, so if y'all will go to, would be the next page, you've got some pie charts on there. That is a breakdown of, as Rick said, delinquent taxes get turned over to us the July after those tax bills are issued. And we do our best to, as Rick said, balance out, one, the need for that money to come back to the district, two, with also the needs of your property owners, your taxpayers, your constituents. The first pie chart would be the taxes that were turned over to us in July of this year. So that'd be three short months ago. And then at that point, we've already collected 36% or more of that. And then the other two pie charts go through and they show the additional years, the longer we've had them, the more we're going to get those property taxes actually collected. It also breaks down where the rest of your property taxes are, in case you were wondering about that. Some of the bigger ones, especially as you get to the older tax year, that would be 2022, really all that's left would be, one, a lot of accounts that have very, very small number or dollar amounts on them. And therefore, really all we want to do is send notices, it doesn't make sense to try and file a lawsuit for $25 worth of property taxes, that's an oversimplification, but again, not something that we would do. The other biggest one is going to be what we call deferrals. So in the state of Texas, when an individual reaches the age of 65, they don't have to pay property taxes on their homestead anymore. The assumption there is that they are on a fixed income, and at the point at which it's no longer their homestead, the property taxes get paid at that point in time. So those will get So those will get collected at some point, but the idea, you know, one of the only good ideas from the legislature, it seems, was to protect those specifically that would be on fixed incomes and therefore in danger of losing property at that point. But to that point and to what Rick said, the next couple of pages of your outline actually show our collection efforts. And what I like to refer to these as is ways that we incentivize communication. Our first priority is just to get the taxes paid. And honestly, the easiest way to do that is just to talk to your property owners. We've actually moved offices this year and added two full-time staff members to try and facilitate that better. We set up the office in a way that is inviting and does provide for them to come in. And we actually get to live out kind of, you know, we get called counselors. We don't get to act like counselors a lot, but we kind of get to live out that entitlement as a counselor to individuals that come in that have issues with property taxes, whether that's setting them up on payout agreements. A lot of times, we're actually helping them get exemptions that they're entitled to, which means they pay less, and they're entitled to those. But we do try to make it, it's a scary process. We try to make it a lot less scary for the folks that come in to our office. And one last point that I just to kind of put into perspective, so the number of properties we ended up having to file lawsuits on this year was 211. We posted 38 for sale, but we only actually sold or bid into trust eight, which is less than two, I think it's 2.7%. And the number that we actually file on is a lot less than the number that's turned over to us. So really and truly, the number of properties we actually have to sell, which are mostly substandard properties, dilapidated properties, properties that have not been used for years and years and years, that number ends up being almost 1% or less than 1% of everything that you turn over to us. So we get a good amount, really the majority of your property taxes collected without actually having to go through the entirety of the collection process. So, and then the last thing I'll mention, I talked about those changes in the appraisal roll during that first slide. You end up losing property tax dollars on that, but the nice thing is funding for school districts is kind of a seesaw. Every time your property taxes go up, your state funding goes down. Every time your state funding goes, your property taxes go down, your state funding is supposed to come up. Our law firm, every year, conducts an audit of those values to see if the property taxes have gone down so that you can increase your state funding. This last year, we found another $731,000 for the district for tax year 2021. And over the last seven years, we've actually increased state funding by over $8 million for the district as a result. So yes, losing money off the tax roll on the front end is not great, but there is a way to come back and to make all that up and to get that money back for the district. So, and this, this specific service, and then all the services we provide are done at no cost to the district. So our money comes out or our payment comes out of when the property tax gets collected. So you won't see any bills to attorneys, which some of the board members abuse, they know they can call me and not for it. But that's okay, we enjoy that. And we'll entertain any questions that you all have, whether it's about the state funding piece of this or we're about with property tax collections as a whole.
I don't have any questions. I just, Mr. Boswick, I remember when you were on the school board when I was probably 10 years old. And thank, yeah, thank you for all of your service and dedication to Waco ISD. And Connor is actually the newest member of the Waco Education Foundation. So thank you for your service to the district and thank you for all you guys do in such a compassionate way. I appreciate that.
So thank you so much. Would you definitely demonstrate that? We appreciate it. Thank you.
And we don't take this job for granted. We very much consider it and honor the work for the district and do it in a way that I hope you all appreciate.
No more. I just wanted to say, thank you guys. I mean, not only do you do incredible work, but we just really like you guys. Also, I don't know anyone that gets really excited when they hear from the tax man. So, Mr. Boswick, I want to thank you for your words because, you know, representing the district, you know, we really appreciate that sincerely.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, announcements presented by Chief Cox.
Good evening again, President Vedanya, Superintendent Spicer, trustees. Tomorrow, Friday, October 31, really great instructional calendar planning is a student holiday. Enjoy and embrace, if all Hallows' Eve or Halloween is your jam, and enjoy it. It's also a staff in-service day, so I hope our staff take the time to plan and get caught up and go enjoy their weekend. Early voting for the November 4th, 2025 general election is underway. There are opportunities, depending on where you live, to support public schools, China Spring, Midway, I think there's a couple of others. And that early voting is running through tomorrow at 7:00 PM. McLennan County Elections has compiled resources, including sample ballots and polling locations for the much more complicated things that are on that ballot than supporting our public schools. Saturday, Dr. Spicer and Dr. King Knowles will be guests of the board for their annual participation in Creative Waco's Dia de los Muertos Parade. Trustees, please plan to arrive at Indian Springs Middle School parking lot at 3:00 PM to decorate your golf cart and get lined up with the other floats and participants. If that parade is not what you're looking for on a Saturday and you prefer a reason for a road trip, Waco High Band takes the field for the UIL area marching contest Saturday at Pea Field in Flugerville at 3:30 PM. Please come out and cheer on the Waco High Band. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, November 20. And right after that, we will transition into another Friday Student Holiday Protected Planning Day and go enjoy a much deserved Thanksgiving break. Thank you so much.
I just want to invite people to the university game tomorrow, have a chance to win district if they went out. And I also want to congratulate the girls volleyball team at university for, they came up short for making the playoffs, but it was a play-in game that they lost. But so hopefully they can build on that next year.
Thank you for always keeping us connected, President Vedanya. Appreciate it. Yes, and it, so Friday night, if you're not trick-or-treating, the real treat is going to be at Waco ISD Stadium when our Trojans claim a district championship, right? Yep, thank y'all.
The Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 8:33 this time to pursuit of Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections Point 071 and Point 074. We do not anticipate action when we return, taking action when we return. We are reconvening at 8:58 from closed session where no action was taken, and the meeting is adjourned.